I talked to mom. I talked to mom about the. I guess she's okay with it, as long as I pay for it. Unless unless it comes in a piece and that's, you know, if she was talking about having Freeman go out there and I pay the bill. And whatever needs to be done.
Okay, it's 5:00 P. M. Let's go ahead and get the meeting started. We'll begin with prayer and pledge allegiance. Uh, Dr. Wiley, will you lead us in both, please? Move on stand.
Father, we just thank you for this great community in the country that makes it possible for us. Father, we ask at this time to watch out for our men and arms and rest the people here of the people who are blessed in the Ukraine. Father, we ask you to bless the liberations that we have here. Please guide and direct us to make the decisions that are best for the people of Blue Ridge. Jesus. Pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the third item on the agenda is approval of minutes from previous meeting. Um, do I have a motion to approve the March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two council minutes? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, everyone in favor, raise your hand, please. Okay, motion passes. Uh, next is the April seventh, two thousand twenty-two workshop visioning session. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, everyone in favor, raise your hand, please. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda, number four, is approval of agenda or motion to amend agenda. Um, I think everyone's fine with the agenda as is, correct?
Correct.
Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand, please. Okay, motion passes. Okay, item number five, we five, we will have several items for public hearing, first being a rezoning, um, an ordinance to amend the traffic code. And this is something that we had talked about at the last meeting with our first reading. So to begin with, I'm gonna let our attorney explain it one more time, and then we will open the floor for any public comments, and then, uh, councilmen can discuss at that time. Okay, check.
This is an ordinance to amend, uh, the parking, the existing parking ordinance, and essentially what it would do is limit to three-hour parking between the hours of eight A. M. and five P. M., uh, each day within the downtown business district, that area that's generally described as, uh, East Main Street between Turk Street, Mountain Street, and West Main Street between Depot Street and Mountain Street. Uh, it would also allow a call for signs to be posted in designated areas, uh, and the authorized the city police departments would force this section with the first violation being punished by a fine of fifty dollars, second violation punished by a fine of a hundred dollars, and each violation thereafter being punished by a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you. Okay, do I have anyone from the public who would like to make a comment, and if so, you have a total of two minutes?
Can I ask a question of the?
Yes.
When you say replace the present ordinance, the present ordinance is for two-hour parking and does not authorize signs nor enforcement, is that correct?
Uh, I believe that's correct, yes.
So this is a three-hour, instead of two-hour parking, it allows signs, and it has a mechanism for enforcement. Thank you.
Does anyone have any, a comment from the audience? Okay, council, any discussion?
Do you think that possibly that this could be tabled until later because of?
I don't, I don't believe that, personally, I don't think it needs to be. I think all the councils pretty much discussed, we've talked with the community.
There's, yeah, 'cause I've had more people come to me than what I even did before, it's like almost over fifty different people and businesses. And with gas prices going up and everything else, and shipping and costs of stuff, it just, they're nervous that it's gonna hurt their business and that type, you know?
I don't think anybody hears out to hurt anybody's business.
Yeah.
I think that anything that we put in effect, if it doesn't work, we'll be able to ratify. Um, I think what we're trying to do is in the best interest of the business, all the businesses downtown, so I don't see there is to table it. If it doesn't work, we'll just re-approach it and fix it.
Madam Mayor, may I ask?
Yes.
Are you making a motion to table, or are you asking the question?
Um. I guess I'll just make a motion to table. Or asking if we could.
Okay, if you're, if you're wanting to make a motion, Christie's made a motion, do I have a second? Okay. Motion failed, so do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I want to do a roll call vote on this, Dr. Wiley. Yes. Angie Art?
Yes.
Yes.
Jack Taylor? Christie? Okay. No? And Bill Bevan's down, okay? Motion passes three to zero. Okay, or I'm sorry, three to two. Math's off a little today. Um, okay, moving on to section B, an ordinance of the City of Blue Ridge establishing general purchasing, and this is again a second reading, and I'll let our attorney explain this one more time.
In our city charter, it provides that the city council shall by ordinance prescribe procedures for a system of centralized purchasing for the city, and so what this ordinance does is is exactly that, uh, to provide for a system of centralized purchasing of the city, and it essentially gives the city administrator, um, or in the event that there's ultimately a city manager, uh, the authority to make purchases on behalf of the city, subject to the guidelines set forth herein, which in summary are these, uh, purchases for less than five thousand dollars can be made by the city administrator without competitive bidding and without city council approval. Purchases between five thousand and seventy-five thousand dollars can be made by the city administrator, uh, provided that there are at least two written quotes obtained from individual vendors, and then any purchases of more than seventy-five thousand or more have to be approved by the mayor and city council. There's a couple of caveats, um, one, I think everybody should know that no purchases can be made unless they are in the budget, so it has to be something that is budgeted for purchase regardless, uh, so this assumes that that there's already something in the budget for these purchases. The other thing is that there are certain state laws that preempt, um, local ordinances in terms of purchasing, uh, and have specific requirements for things like, uh, public works, construction, roads, highways, and bridges, and we have to adhere to those state laws, no matter what this policy provides, and so that's set forth in here too.
Okay, I might open this up to the, does anyone on the council have a question or comment?
So again, Chuck, this is just what's in the budget, up to seventy-five thousand dollar purchases. No purchases can be made unless it's in the budget, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I think the more accurate way to say it is that no purchase can be made unless it's in the budget.
Okay.
And then, if it's in the budget and less than five thousand, there's a policy for that. If it's in the budget and between five thousand and seventy-five thousand, there's a policy for that. Purchases of more than seventy-five thousand have to come back to you guys for approval, no matter what, even if they're in, even if they're already in the budget, they still have to.
Make sure that we were clear with the public.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Okay, since this is a public hearing, we will ask if there is anyone in the audience who has anything that'd like to add, you have two minutes. Okay, if not, we will ask, um, council, I'll ask you to make a motion to approve the ordinance. So, motion made, who has a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, Dr. Wiley?
Yes.
Angie Art?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Christie? And Bill Bevan's. Motion passes five, zero. Okay, the next item is requested by property owner to allow the property located at one eighty Mountain Highway Trail of Blue Ridge to be D. N. X. from, uh, the incorporated area of the city. So, Eric, I'm gonna let you go into this a little bit. Yes, but then go first. So we'll open up for public comments, including the property owners, if you guys would like to come up to the, to the mic and introduce yourself, and then tell what you're wanting.
Okay. Scott Jaiet.
Can you speak, can you get a little closer and speak louder?
Sure, Scott Jaiet. Can you hear me on that?
In my ear.
Hello. Got me now, so, all right. Uh, my name's Scott Jaiet, Stephanie, we've been in the community for about twenty-one years, um, lived in the city since oh-five, and, uh, my property lies right up here, and the city line actually runs, the city county line actually runs through my property, um, and I'd like to have my property D. N. X. for sale purposes. Buyers that want to buy my home would like to have it in the county, and that's kind of just part of that, so, moving on, trying to get out of the city, and I don't know what to say, you know, we wanna, uh, move on out of the city and into the county, um, you know, the city has ordinances on short-term rentals, and we would like to own out of the city, so, that's about all I have right now.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who, who have, anyone have a comment from the, uh, audience? Okay, council, what I'd like to do is have Eric explain kind of what's going on with this and what his analysis of the situation is.
So obviously, we take deannexation and annexation very seriously, and typically, when we look at those, we look at it from a service standpoint, and if a resident is requesting a D. N. X. deannexation, it has to be something to do with the service, whether the county can provide a service or the city can provide a service. In this case, it doesn't meet that criteria, this is being done solely for a short-term rental, therefore, we're recommending denial of this request.
I have a single question, is the county line at that point straight, and is it defined by, from point A to point B, by some surveyor as being the straight line?
So if you look at your package? The best way to show it?
So the, the answer to the question is yes.
Yes.
Defined by, defined legally defined as in, as part of the survey. That would take a bite out of it, and therefore would be, would be a bite out of the edge of.
Partially, those would probably be correct.
Any questions from council? Okay, will someone make a motion? I think the city's recommendation is to decline this request, are there, do I have a motion for such?
I'll make a motion to decline the request.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Wiley? Yes. Angie Art?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So that, motion passes five, zero. Okay. Uh, under D. on our agenda, an ordinance to amend administration, article departments, boards, commissions, centers, so which one of you would like to explain this? And this will be, uh, this is a first reading.
The current ordinance makes provision for department heads, and, um, it really hasn't been changed in, it appears to be at least twenty years or so, uh, so it's a little bit antiquated in terms of what, how the city actually operates, uh, so Eric had provided at the work session, um, a new organizational chart, uh, which calls for basically the redesignation, realignment, if you will, of the city departments, and so what's before you is an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances, um, to reflect what has been proposed, um, in, in Eric's new organizational chart, and essentially what it would do is it would create the following departments, uh, for the City of Blue Ridge, administration, finance, legal, public safety, public works, planning and zoning, municipal court, and the utilities department.
Can I ask a question? Is the organizational chart that we have before us, which is in multiple colors, has that been promulgated in the website such that the, the public and the voters can see it?
Um, we can do that actually after this first reading.
Okay, so this is not yet out there?
Correct.
Okay, and secondly, it places the mayor and the city council above the city administrator, and then the departments below the city administrator?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question, um, mayor, um, we already have an ordinance on this, we'll just, we'll just check it, please.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Okay, since this is a public hearing, do I have any, uh, comments from public? No? Okay. So that was our first reading, we do not have to vote on that tonight. Um, item number six on the agenda, the consent agenda, you've all had an opportunity to look over this, all the items on the consent agenda, they've been sent out to the public as well, so I'd like to have a motion to approve our items on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, uh, let's do a roll call vote as well, Dr. Wiley?
Yes.
Angie Art?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes five, zero. Okay, under action items, uh, as we have talked about with the planning commission, we've had our first and second reading on that.
But then that's what we're supposed to.
Oh, yeah. No, that's next, that's next. Yeah.
Okay, good, all right.
Sorry about that. Um, so under the appointments, it's time tonight to appoint our planning mission. We've received applications, and, uh, let me go over what the year terms are as well. So we are, what I'm looking at is Brian Higgins serving as a four-year term, Greg Arnold serving on a four-year term, Dale Green serving on a four-year term, and two-year terms would be Cindy Tremel and John Suave, and currently, Brian Higgins, Cindy Tremel, and John Suave are serving, so our two new members would actually be Greg and Dale, so, um, do I have any questions on this from the council? Everybody's in agreement? Okay, I think, I think this will be a good group.
What's with the two-year?
Uh, two-year would be Cindy Tremel and John Suave. Yeah, yeah, and then Brian, Greg, and Dale have agreed to the four-year term.
The two-years is because they're already on there.
Yeah, we're, well, that's how we agree.
But they've not both been on them?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So they both have been, I think they kind of feel they're, they've preferred the shorter term since they've been serving. Yes, yes. Yeah, that's how the, that's how the ordinance was written and revised, yeah, to go with our terms. Okay, do I have a motion to appoint, uh, Brian Higgins, Greg Arnold, Dale, and Dale Green for your terms, and Cindy Tremel and John Suave to two-year terms?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, let's have a roll call vote, Dr. Wiley? Yes, Angie?
I mean, yes.
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 Jack, yes?
Yes.
Christie? And Bill? Motion passes five, zero. Okay. The next, the next item is a resolution, uh, that we've talked about in our workshop meeting last week with, in reference to the D. D. A., and I want to go ahead and say with this resolution, we are going to try to schedule a meeting on the first Monday in May with the D. D. A. to discuss all guidelines and how we move forward in working together with them in a good manner, and, uh, the resolution that you guys had asked for, Chuck, to prepare, I will let you explain that as well, if you don't mind.
The Downtown Development Authority was created, um, by the mayor and council in two thousand eighteen by the adoption of a resolution, uh, and in that resolution, uh, there are certain powers and duties that are conferred upon the Downtown Development Authority. Uh, this maintains those same, uh, powers and duties, uh, but provides that certain powers are exercised only with the advance approval of the city council, of the city council. And essentially what those are would be contracts and agreements entered into by the Downtown Development Authority that require city council approval, and purchases in excess of five thousand dollars, uh, would require city council approval. So that's in a nutshell what this, what this resolution would do, is it would, uh, provide that certain, the exercise of certain powers by the Downtown Development Authority would require the advance approval of the city council.
And the spending of money is consistent with the some restrictions that we've placed on the city administrator and the departments of the city, is that correct?
That, that's certainly one way to look at it, yes.
So they have a five thousand dollar spending budget before they have to come to the city for approval?
That, that's right, uh, and it, it would assume that there would be money in, in their budget to begin with, but yes, that, that there was money for them to spend, they could spend it with five, up to five thousand dollars without city council approval.
So, so what? Is it, is it covered, what would not be covered? I mean, does this pretty much cover anything that they would do? Or, I mean?
Other than the five thousand dollar spending is the way I read it. They would have the ability to spend five thousand dollars, is that correct, Chuck?
That, that's correct.
But no more than five thousand dollars without city approval, and the thing is, how often can they spend that five thousand dollars? Once a day, once a week, once a month?
And what I would actually maybe think about, since we are going to meet with them collaboratively on the, May the second, maybe we work through all these issues and then, and then approve this resolution?
So you'd like to, look, may as well.
That's something I would think we might want to think about until after the meeting, but?
Well, ba- basically, a, a five thousand dollar expenditure means it's an item, so you wouldn't have an item that occurred every day, I mean, that's practical purposes, as I read what we've got here.
But in practically, you could, though.
But, but just say they could buy some signs for five thousand dollars or four thousand one hundred ninety-nine, and just put them up, and they looked terrible, and that really means they can do that, they don't have to come back to the council and ask about it, right?
They have a five thousand dollar spending budget, is that correct, Chuck?
That's correct, but I, I would say that in terms of locating signs, I mean, that would still, I don't know exactly where the signs would be located, but to the extent that they would be in city right-of-way or city property, they would still require the city's approval.
That's a sign order, separate ordinance, but that's the sign.
Well, I, I mean.
We have a sign.
Yes.
We do, and we also have ordinances that, um, relate to city right-of-way and usage of the city right-of-way and those kinds of things.
And you, you requested, that's what you're?
None of it's up to you guys, if you want more.
I don't have a problem table on it, if you, if you think.
I don't see, I don't see a reason to.
Okay, and if you guys are.
Between the first and second reading, that we're gonna have this workshop, and if we're overwhelmed with evidence that says it needs to be redone, then we redo it.
And this one, since it's a resolution, will only require?
Uh, one meeting.
Uh, but, but it does, it does not, this one does not talk about the permits of the numbers. So how, how is that going to change? Because that should be the council, too.
Yeah, we probably have to do that through, um, through ordinance, I would think on that.
Well.
Or could, with the resolution?
You could do it through resolution, um, but it's not reflected in this resolution.
So we probably would need to table it if that's the case, if you guys.
I think if the mayor, in her wisdom, has suggested that it might be tabled, that's as close to making a motion where she's not allowed to be tabled, so I will, I will interpret that discussion as saying, we'll table it, I now make a motion formally to table this for one month.
And I will second that motion.
All in agreement, raise your hand. Okay, and then make sure that you mark your calendars down for May the second, we'll, we'll have two joint meetings. Yeah.
Tuesday afternoon.
Well, they meet, the D. D. A. meets on Mondays, don't you?
Correct, Monday.
So you may, you, I know you're, you may not be able to be here, but you sure? Okay, and we just thought it'd be convenient, since they're meeting on that date, to make that our meeting date to discuss all, all guidelines, and, and you guys can be thinking about how you want to, things you want to put in place, you as well. Is that good for you?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so motion approves, to table this resolution until next meeting. Okay, reports, number eight, do we have anything in particular? Uh, let me go ahead and remind the public, too, we have, city administrator gives a monthly report, which goes online, I know some of you, I bet Richard, you've seen it, several of you, so if you want an opportunity to look at the, uh, monthly reports, you can always go on our Facebook page, our website, and they come up, uh, the very in-depth reports involving every department, so make sure you check that out. Okay, do you have anything else to add? Okay.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
That is that we prepare maybe twenty copies of that each month, and bring them in here, so the public can pick them up if they're, if they're old, like me, I'm not real good at the website.
Hey, that's a great idea, and we could even give them out at, at the meetings before we're here.
Just put them here, and I'll pick them up.
Yeah, we'll do that, that's a good idea.
Recycle the paper they come in.
Good idea, good idea. Okay, it's time for public comments, and, uh, I don't think Downtown Development, you didn't want to, you weren't on anything today. Caesar could not be here today for the Blue Ridge Business Association, and, uh, we have Cody Chin, could you come up, state your name, and you have two min, three-minute section?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, good afternoon, everybody, my name's Cody Chan, uh, I'm the owner and founder of Shed New Stella's Winery, uh, who, sorry, I'm the owner and founder of Shed New Stella's Winery, work under Blue Ridge, uh, we just got our farm winery license, and we're really grateful and thankful for that. Joined today, Larry Lykins, who's the owner and founder of Carticade Vineyards, and both of our wineries are operating in downtown Blue Ridge. We, uh, want to propose an amendment to section six dash forty of the code, uh, basically just for some clarification on, uh, the way the ordinance, uh, pertains to farm wineries and consumption on premises license, um, or pouring license. It is not illegal at the state level, in fact, the state specifically grants that, um, right to farm wineries, uh, and the Blue Ridge Code, uh, doesn't prohibit that, uh, either, and, uh, the only thing that is in there is that there is a fifty percent non-alcoholic sales requirement, uh, to be food or merchandise or something that is not alcohol, right? Excuse me, right? Um, and in the past, and there's, um, licenses operating now that haven't been required for farm wineries to have a consumption on premises license, and we just want to, uh, propose that we amend the code just to make that explicit, so that that gray area isn't, so I guess, open to interpretation, just to kind of lines it out quickly, that there's an exception, just like there already is for hotels and resorts, and bed and breakfasts, and that sort of stuff, and that amendment would specifically just say that farm wineries are not required to meet that fifty percent non-alcoholic sales requirement to hold a pouring license. It does not like the minimum seating requirement. And we've provided some sample language there, the changes would be underlined in that. Larry, do you have anything else?
Um, no, other than, other than, you know, I have Carticade Wine and Craft, you know, it's jewelry, though, and we've been operating this way, and our fourth, this is our fourth year with this current license, we've been operating this way. We haven't had any problems, or, or at least from our perspective, any problems or any, instances that would cause concern. It's a family-friendly place, and. Family-friendly place, and, you know, the reason the state allows for those requirements not to be made is because we are producers of our products, and the state gives a lot of leeway to farm wineries and breweries, I'm in this case talking about farm wineries, because of that, farm wineries have a lot of things across a lot of various agriculture and retail.
Okay, town set, sorry.
And such, so we're asking for that same thing that is allowed in the state surrounding us.
Thank you, okay. Robert, Robert Borguard.
We got close.
Yeah, I always get your name, I'm better. You, you, that's your name.
It's Bor, we...
Borguard.
Robert Borguard.
Borward.
I've got some cards I would like to hand out to everybody here. I wonder if you need another one? We've got these right there too.
Thank you.
So, I'm here just to kind of reintroduce myself to the city and New City Council from the last time I was here, which was at least two years ago, three years ago, since COVID shut down the Trout Festival, as we've got the Blue Ridge Trout and Outdoor Adventures Festival, better known as Trout Fest, all locals around here in our committee, like I said, I want to reintroduce it to you, two years lost to COVID implications, we have a heck of a buzz going on online right now with our social media channels through Instagram and Facebook, we are, have reached 68,000 people with our messages across those platforms, and that's, you know, just people scattered everywhere. We've sold out this event from a vendor standpoint, which I think is a real good indication of what's going on, what people are ready to do, both from a vendor standpoint and the visitors. In 2019, that's 90 vendors, by the way, in 2019, we had 67 vendors and we had about 3,500 people through the gates. We are anticipating 4,000, maybe 4,500 through the gates this year, we don't have any real way to measure that until the day of the event, which is April 30th, and we've just kind of taken this one upon ourselves as a, kind of a bigger vendor Trout Festival. It benefits the community outreach and education conservation programs of Trout Unlimited and the local chapter of Blue Ridge Mountain Trout Unlimited, number 696, of which I am fundraising chairman and a 20-year member. So we're, we're anticipating big crowds, we've, like I said, we've done some things a little different this year, we've incorporated a children's activity zone to help bring in families and introduce youngsters to the principles of conservation and outdoor recreation. The outdoor recreation side of this is more than just fishing, this is not a fishing event, but it is centered upon...